Thank you. Mike, would you take role, please?
Yes. Larry Fox.
Here.
Michelle LaRose.
Here.
Summer McMillan.
Here.
Keith Voight. Sue Grissom.
Here.
Tom Murphy.
Here.
And Mike Mitchell is here.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Next up would be approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved?
Support.
A motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, approval of our April 8, 2021, meeting minutes.
Any commotion to approve our April 8, 2021, meeting minutes?
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner LaRose. Any changes? Hearing seen done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is item six. This is a call to the public. If you have anything you would like to address the commission on other than item 7A, which is the Redwood proposal, now would be the time for item 7A. We'll have a call to the public in the middle of that particular agenda item. Anyone? Okay, we're going to close our call to the public. We're moving on to item seven, which is a public hearing. Give you a little brief description on how this is going to flow here this evening, and then we'll open that and get the meeting rolling. So in a moment, I'll open the public hearing. We're going to turn the floor over to the meeting over to our planning director, Troy Langer. He'll introduce the project and add some comments for us. And then we'll invite the applicants to come up, introduce themselves, add any additional information they would like to add to that. Then they're going to return to their seats. And at that moment, then, we'll open the public comments section of the meeting. At that point, you can come forward, podium, or seat, your choice. Just give us your name, address, comments you would like to make. There will not be any interaction during that time. You'll see a lot of us writing, and we'll try and get answers for your questions and comments you may have in the next portion of the meeting, which is when we'll invite the applicant back up. And we're going to go through a staff review letter that we have. And that will cover a lot of the points that you will bring up this evening. And anything that's not covered, we'll make sure we bring up ourselves. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing at 7:03 PM for the applicant, Redwood Living, a portion of tax ID number 470826100-019. The applicant proposes an approximately 27.13-acre apartment project in the northeast part of the Heartland Glen Golf Course development. The proposal consists of 148 apartment units and a total of 30 buildings. And for your information, the applicant is at the preliminary phase step of the plan development process with the planning commission. If you're interested in following that, you can go to the township's website, Planning and Zoning Department, our zoning ordinance, and you'll want to take a look at Articles 3118. So for that, I guess I should also state all public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So I think we're ready to turn the meeting over to you, Troy.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to start off with Google Maps, just to kind of identify the area we're talking about. This is the Heartland Glen Golf Course property with M59 here. This is Cundy Road. Further to the east would be Pleasant Valley and Fenton Road. So this is the general area that we are talking about. I'm going to switch to a general site plan of the project. So this is the, it's just a general outlay of that project. Again, M59 would be at the top, kind of off the screen. Cundy would be at the top of this. And then the access would come in off of the Heartland Glen Lane, which goes back to serve the golf course. And then this is the development that we're talking about. Before I get into talking about the development, I thought I'd just outline what this process is, this plan development process. It's probably easiest to think of the plan development process as a three-step process. The first step is conceptual. That is where the applicant has, submits a concept plan. It's an idea. It's a thought. It's something the applicant is thinking. And the goal there is to give the applicant feedback. Is this something that has merit? Is this something that can move forward? And that concept plan is brought to the planning commission as well as the township board. The applicant has completed that process. There's no formal decisions made at conceptual review at either the planning commission or the board level. The next step is the preliminary plan review, which is the step we're at right now. This is a public hearing. This is now the opportunity to notify all properties within 300 feet, as well as notice in the newspaper, and give any neighbors an opportunity to come in, see the plan that is proposed, and have comments, and have input on that plan. That's the process we're in right now. It's preliminary. It's a much more detailed plan than the conceptual plan. And that requires a planning commission formal recommendation. And then after that, it will go on to the township board, where the township board will make a formal decision on the preliminary plan, part of the plan development. Then the last part of it is the final PD, the final part of the plan development. And in that stage, for the most part, we're done with looking at the site plan. We're going to focus more on any easement agreements, any maintenance agreements, more of what's commonly just referred to as legal documents. There might be a site plan that's brought back to the planning commission if there's a revision that needs to be made. That would be the stage where the revised plan would come back so the planning commission can make sure it complies with their desires. And that also goes to planning commission and the township board. That would be the end of the process for the plan development. So we're in the middle of that whole process. This is the proposed development. It has two access points off of Heartland Glen Lane. One is on the north, and then the other is on the south. It occupies, I'll call it 27 acres. And this is generally how it lays out. There's 148 units. These are all, all of these units are between 1,300 and 1,600 square feet. They're all two-bedroom. They all have attached garages. They're, it's a similar feature for, for most of these units. And with that, I'll be able to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Anybody from Redwood like to come forward, introduce themselves, make any comments?
My name is Patricia Ricosi with Redwood Living.
And my name is Emily Engelhardt, also with Redwood Living. Do you need an address?
No, not from you guys. We know where you are.
I wanted to first say, Troy, thank you so much for your very thorough staff report. Really appreciate, obviously, you put a lot of work into it, and really, very much appreciate that. And this evening, myself, Emily, and our engineer, Ian, from Bergman and Associates, will be here to answer any questions that you may have regarding our project.
Okay. Good deal. If you'd like to return to your seats, then, well, yeah, that was quick. Yeah, we'll leave it on. So now what we're going to do is open the public comment portion of the meeting. We'll just take your turns. We're all, we're all orderly. Just come up, give your name, address, comments you'd like to make. As I had mentioned earlier, we won't get in a lot of interaction back and forth. We're taking lots of notes and hopefully get answers to any questions or comments you may have presented to us. So is anybody, does anybody in the room wish to come forward and make any comments? Sure, if you could come up to the mic. That way they can hear you at home on TV.
Unfortunately, I can't quite focus this, so I can't see how far back it comes. Lasik surgery, so I have a little bit of problems still. The, I, my name's Craig Whipple. I live at 1768 Bobby Street, so I back up to the golf course. So I'm not certain how far they're coming back up to us on that side.
You're still off.
I'm still off. So is that property that's still off, is that being retained ownership to the golf course, or is that part of their property that just hasn't been developed yet?
Okay. We'll get you some answers.
So that brings me to the, why I have that question, is on the plat, there's a strip of land between the golf cart, golf course, and our property that is labeled as a buffer zone. I'm curious as to who owns the buffer zone, and who's responsible for the maintaining of the buffer zone. We've had some issues in the past with the golf course as far as maintaining some problem trees back there. We have oak wilt working its way down the line back there, and we have all these great big oaks that are starting to die. And me in particular, I have about a three-foot around oak, what's left of an oak tree that had three trunks, each of them about three foot around. There's one trunk left, and it's about to come into my yard. And according to the golf course, it's their property, if you go out there and try to knock any of the high weeds down. But according to the print, it says buffer zone. So like I said, I didn't know that until last year that it said buffer zone. I, the issue I had with the golf course telling me not to knock the weeds down was years ago. Also, with one of the trees that had fallen down into my neighbor's yard was years ago. So I'm kind of curious, is, you know, what's, what's to expect with this going forward? Because when this tree comes down, like I said, it's going to come down into my yard, and it will probably hit a fairly big shed and probably damage other trees in my yard if it's not, you know, maintained ahead of time. But I don't know whose responsibility that's going to be. So that's kind of my, my question with that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Anyone else?
Matt Gagne, 12250 Cundy Road. The development that looks like is going to come right up to my property line edge. And I'm kind of wondering, what are we going to do about how this is going to look? Right now, I have a golf course to look at, and pretty soon, I'm going to have a whole bunch of apartments sitting right on top of my backyard. So I was kind of wondering, what do we do, or what are we going to do about that situation?
Hello.
Hi, I'm Lynn Durenahan. I live at 1261 Sean Court. And my property does not back up to the golf course, but I still have some concerns. So I'd like to understand why the township is considering apartments on this property. For years, we've heard rumors that it would, would be subdivision with housing, or even condos. So I think studies will show that apartment dwellers are a different class of person than someone who actually owns the property. And so I'm concerned as to what this is going to do to our property My second comment is, this, is there an overall larger plan for the rest of the golf course? And if the township commission can, you know, advise on that, you know, this is the beginning of what, is what we would all like to know.
Okay. Yes. Anyone else? Come on up.
Do you need to restate your name?
No, we can hear you. It's, at home, they can't hear. That's why we need the mic.
So typically, when, when they build a development, they have a separate entrance for construction. Because as they build some of the houses and want to get people into them, they do not want construction going through those entrances. So has there been anything said about where they plan to do that? Are they going to bring that through the neighborhood, up Maxfield Boulevard, through the backside of the golf course? Or are they going to go through their property that they own right there on Cundy that's across from the party store? Or how do they, where do they plan to take their construction traffic? Maxfield Road, the paved Maxfield Road, which is Maxfield Lake Road, has already suffered severe damage from the developments in the back. That road is like driving through a war zone. I mean, you know, the road is just completely crumbling apart. So to take another set there, plus then have them run down our dirt road, because Maxfield Boulevard, which you would think would be the paved road, is the dirt road, that ends off back towards the edge of the golf course in the backside there. So, you know, that's, that's a very narrow roadway. People do park in the road there. And to have them start bringing in big trucks down a dirt road, they're going to create more dust, damage, and everything else for us living there. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy Clementowski, 12198 Cundy. Is there an ordinance on construction work, like a timeframe? Because I, all I do is construction. So in certain areas, they have ordinances. You can only work this set of hours each day?
Okay. Thank you.
Mike Hoskins, 11998 Maxfield Boulevard. And along the lines of her question about the apartments, and maybe I missed this, but we were at the meetings when it was zoned, I believe it was three-quarter acre lots and houses. Is it different zoning now for apartments? When did, when did this get approved? And how did this get approved? Did we miss the meeting? I'd like to know that. And then maybe someone can help me. I know where Bobby Road, you say, is not even on this map. But my house goes much further east than Bobby Road.
Right. That's, my, my property is right there at the edge with 15-foot setback property line marker. And my property is right, Bullard Road dead ends into my property right across.
So you're on the north side. I'm on Maxfield Boulevard, but my driveway goes right off the end, right to the golf course. So I'm 50 feet from the golf course. But I don't know where that is on this. My house is alone with the pool.
Oh, you're kitty, you're directly kitty corner across from Mobbs, number six green.
Behind number four green and next to number five.
Yeah, I'm kitty corner back across number six. You can, I'm, you can see, actually, you can see Doug and Sarah's house, which is next to me.
Where is, where is my property compared to where the edge of this is?
You are, you're kitty corner this way.
Off the path still?
Yeah, you're back over there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come forward? Come on up. Don't be shy.
My name's Catherine Ballmer. I live at the same address, 11998 Maxfield Boulevard. And I know we can't stop this development. And I know Heartland Glen has a right to do whatever they want on their property. But I would ask that you guys take care of the people that thought they were living on a golf course and had a beautiful view, and now we're not. So that buffer zone we talked about, can you consider extending that, making it bigger? There's no way I wanted to live in the back of.
Property value is already ruined, but it's going to be kind of a nice.
Yeah, I'm going to have to sell my house and disclose. My property value is going to go down. But like I said, I realize, you know, Heartland Glen gets to do what they want. But please, think about the small guy that's living around the golf course. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening. Hello.
Hi, my name's Gail Offen. I live at 1434 Maxfield. I too wondered when, that was a really good question about when this actually turned into apartments, which sounded nervous. But that said, I just want to know if there's any provision for what kind of chemicals are going to be used on the property there to take care of the maintenance of the lawn. I live on the edge of the golf course. There's been some contention over the years. We have a lake that chemicals wash into. And I just wonder whether consideration has been made to say what chemicals can or can't be used on this property. I know everybody, it's a foregone conclusion, but there are ways we can modify this to help all of us. Because a development like this, I understand, helps the tax base. I get the business side of it. But there's also humans here and here, and we live there. And we want to continue to live in a way that's harmonious and healthful and safe. So I guess I would say, please consider a wider belt, consider about traffic, consider about putting a limit on what kind of chemicals can be used because of the runoff into the waters around us. Please be considered about the people that live there if you are indeed allowing this to happen. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Yaldo, and I'm one of the owners of Heartland Glen. I just wanted to clarify a few things to, to the public that have had some comments. I, I see a lot of positive comments that came out that Heartland Glen needs to be developed. Back in 2004, there was a special assessment that was established to bring sewers. Okay, in that special assessment, there was an opportunity for the public to come in, because there were public hearings. They could have objected. It would have been like music to my ears at the time, because I wouldn't have to drop so much money into that special assessment. Then there was another opportunity for the public to object to this, to the new zoning that was just created by the township for the benefit of Heartland Glen to be developed, and which is the, the special zoning that allows higher density. Not that we need higher density, but that allows the township, planning commission, and the board to have the flexibility to do their best to approve projects. And that's why this turned into, actually, those units are homes. They have two-car garages attached. They, just the name is apartment, and they have to be treated as apartments because they're rental properties. So that should answer how this turned into, from single family to apartments. Because it's part of a bigger project under a special zoning, or the township, planning commission, and the board decides whether it's appropriate for that location. The most important part of, of this development is it's going to bring water to that neck of woods. By bringing water, that, that, the goose will lay the golden egg into that, into that, that area as a whole. Plus, plus, there were complaints or, or talk about the, the road. Cundy Road, in that assessment for the water, there is money allocated for, for redoing a portion of Cundy Road that has crumbled, collapsed. I don't know about Maxfield Road, but I know Cundy is going to be redone, because there is funds available in that water assessment that we're, we're going to commit to definitely that will help at least the traffic of Cundy Road. For the construction traffic, they're coming off M59 directly into Heartland, Heartland Road. If we have to create a special drive, we will need to get a permit from, from Michigan Department of Transportation to cross not into Heartland Road, maybe a little bit to the west of it, through the piece of land that we own, right next to the small shopping strip to the west of us. We can do that if that's needed. But I don't see where it's going to be needed, because all traffic is going to come in from M59 either east or west into Heartland Glen Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Randall Samuel's also at 1434 Maxfield. And I would like to say the gentleman's name, I don't remember. I remember those meetings when they were talking about the rezoning, and I remember there were people there objecting to it, I being among one of them, as I recall. So, I mean, it was a long time ago, and maybe forget it, but we were there. But another, as far as the traffic on Maxfield Road, there was some construction about a year or two ago, where trucks were going and down that. And the county was contacted, because it is a county road, and they prohibited the roads from, the trucks from continuing to utilize that road. So just know in advance that it's, that you can't have that truck traffic, construction trucks going up and down. Because it's, Maxfield Road is, is a mess. And as far as Cundy Road, you're going to fix it, but it's been fixed before in its resorts to the potholes connected by asphalt, which it is now.
Because all we're doing is tar and spew.
Yeah.
We haven't actually paid it in decades.
Yeah, it's just going to go back to the way it is. And so that's basically all I have. Also, I like the idea of having a nice green belt isolating it so that it keeps it, you know, try to preserve the more or less rural, woodsy feel you get from the golf course. That would be much desired, I know, by the people. And it would certainly lower some of the objection to having all that traffic. And I'm just kind of curious, where are we going to get water? How are we going to get more water? They asked it to me, but maybe it can be explained. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
So since Cundy Road came up, and there's, I'd like a better understanding, is, are they going to just patch it and just a part of it? Or are they going to really repave it? And I think that that should be part of the agreement, if you will, to allow the apartments to be built.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to add a little bit more. I'm sure there's been environmental impact studies done, but I do have a little bit of concern. And maybe you guys have addressed this, just I'm not aware of it, of the, I'm surprised more people from Silver Lake aren't here because of all the connecting waterways that end up into Silver Lake. And has there been consideration of what these, the building, and future building? Because I, I mean, we can all see the whole, they're planning to probably eventually develop the whole front of the course. What's going to happen to this lake? And is there been consideration to those inner waterways that are all in Heartland Glen? That's it. I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Is this available online, or is this on?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
All right. Anyone else? Last call. Okay, we are going to close the public hearing at 7:27. And now what we're going to do is invite the applicants to come on back up. Those that did look at the packet online probably saw that there was a staff review letter there. It was dated for June 17, 2021. What we're going to do here this evening now is the planning commission, the planning director, and the applicant are going to go through the staff review letter. It's going to cover a lot of the points or questions that were brought up. And as I said, anything that didn't get covered at that point, hopefully we can get some answers to outside of the review letter itself. While they're getting set up, everyone, I am on that June 17, 2021, staff review letter. And I am starting on page five this evening. Most of the information on the first four pages is historical in nature, and we've covered a lot of it already. So as Troy had mentioned, this is a plan development. The applicant has come to the township with an idea of how they would like to develop this land. And we have steps and criteria and things we evaluate when we go through looking at a plan development. And in the staff review letter on page five, we are addressing the first items are what we call eligibility criteria. These are found in the Heartland Township zoning ordinance on page 3-38, if you want to jot it down or go back and watch the video of this. A lot of the information that we're going to go through tonight, and far, as far as the process, is in chapter three of the zoning ordinance. And this happens to be on page 38. So we have five items here to review in the eligibility criteria. The first one being recognizable benefits. The applicant has provided a letter dated May 13, 2021. Does anybody on the planning commission have any questions or comments on that letter? Okay. Second item up is the minimum size of the development. We have a requirement in Heartland that a plan development be at least 20 acres. In this case, we're 27.13 approximately. So they do meet the minimum size requirements. Use of public services. This is going to be things like the roads, the water, the sanitary sewer. We're going to get into that in detail here in a couple minutes. So we're going to jump over it in this section of the review letter, because all of the detail is coming up here in a couple minutes. Compatibility with the comprehensive plan. The applicant on page six, you can see we have six items we're looking at under there. Are there any questions for him on that? Any comments on that? Again, these are the eligibility criteria for the development. So they've pretty much met a lot of the eligibility criteria. They wouldn't be here. So I'm moving on to page 16. So I'm moving on to page seven and the fifth item under eligibility is unified control. At the end of the day, they have to own that 27.13 acres. Is that correct, Troy? And would provide documentation supporting that?
Yeah. This, this section is getting to that there's unified control of the plan development to ensure that the common theme of the plan development is maintained. In this case, Redwood would own the 27 acres and they would continue to own it even after the project is completed. Redwood continues to own these and maintain them throughout their lifespan.
Now I'm on, I guess I said, page seven. We've completed those eligibility criteria, but now we're going to get into a little bit more detail. These are the plan development design standards and these are, there are 11 items that we look at here and this is found on page 3-39 of the zoning ordinance. And the first item is the permitted uses. Hate to say it again, we're going to get real deep into permitted uses and density here in a second, but this is going to deal with, are the, is the use of the property permitted in the PD itself? And it's going to answer that density question that has come up in Troy's presentation here probably in the next couple of minutes. So we will get that detail. And that next couple of minutes is like right now because item two is the residential density and we're going to turn this over to Troy.
So I'm going to use a aerial map here. And outlined in the orange would be the Heartland Glen property. And it's just under 400 acres. And just for reference, because there were some comments made, I'll, I'll try to hit on some of those. The area we're talking about matches up with this property line right here. And then the development takes a slight southeasterly turn here and extends south here. So you're, what we're looking at, the 27 acres is in this area over here. There were some people talking about Maxfield or can Maxfield be, will that be a construction access or would that be a connection or is it close? It's highly unlikely that they would have a construction road extend, I don't know, that's getting close to quarter mile to where, where we're talking about. But this is the area we're talking about. So it's 27 acres here. When you calculate density, well, I should probably back up. This entire golf course is designated in a special planning area. And in that, that particular special planning area, it allows up to four units per acre. But this particular special planning area, the goal was to allow for an increase up to 25% of density in the northern portion so that as you work, as, as this property is developed, it becomes less dense in the southern portion of it. So that overall, the density would be at 4%, maybe a little higher in the northern part with the trade-off that it is lower in the southern, but in no way could the overall density of this exceed the, the 4% outlined in the special planning area. So what they are proposing here with 148 units at 27 acres, I think that comes out to 5.45 dwelling units an acre. That is a, it exceeds what's allowed in the special planning area. However, with the aid of the planned development, there's a bonus density that is permitted that the planning commission and the board have discretionary authority to grant up to 40% increase in the number of dwellings. So the 40% increase would allow up to 190 dwelling units on this 27 acre piece. They are at 148. So they do need some of that bonus. The, the density that they'd be allowed is 136, so they're about 12 units over. So 12 of those units would need part of that bonus density. So that's the general density question for this development. That's, those are kind of the issues that the planning commission has to wrestle with on density.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I, after reading through Mr. Langer's letter and then also hearing some feedback from the residents, I'm, I have concerns with granting a bonus density. Looking at any outstanding or, I don't know, I guess any outstanding design, I don't see that compensating for the granting of the bonus density. And it could be an opportunity rather to offer some additional buffers or setbacks. So I, I do have concerns with granting additional density.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I am moving to page eight, which is design details. A lot of times when we get into these plan developments, they're of a mixed-use nature or different building type configurations. Some of them are more commercial office related when we use what we call a pattern book and that would describe and allow for the design details moving forward. When we do a residential PD, typically the site plan or the package that's been submitted takes the place of a pattern book. So in a case like this, you would not see a pattern book. That would be held out more for a commercial or office type planning development. Any questions on that? Comments? Okay. Minimum yard setbacks. I think this is probably a good one to turn back over to Troy.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to use this plan here. I'm going to zoom in. So what we've done in the staff report is outlined what the normal setbacks are and then there's a couple areas where there's some deviation from that. I'm just going to talk on the deviation portions of it, that you've got the chart in the staff report. The first area is on the north side. That would be this area here. So normally there'd be a 40-foot setback on the north side. It's at 24 feet. This was discussed in conceptual review. What the applicant is, and actually the owner, Mr. Yaldo, are proposing, and we'll get into it in a little more detail, is Mr. Yaldo happens to own these properties here and Mr. Yaldo is proposing to provide a landscape easement on those properties to the north. So that is one area where there was a deficiency. The other areas on the south, down here, where again, it's a 40-foot setback, we're at 34 feet. This is the golf course to the south. That's Mr. Yaldo's property. So those were the, kind of the two areas.
Any questions on setbacks? Comments?
Nope.
Okay. Distance between buildings, Troy, probably another good one. You can use your board for.
So I'll just stay with this diagram. The applicant has proposed, as part of the PD, maybe just explain a little of this. The PD process is a unique process and most communities through their zoning have something similar. Some communities might call it planned unit development or something like that. Here it's just called planned development. It's a process where a township can waive or relax most zoning regulations if they feel that there's enough benefit or the project brings enough positive attributes to the community. So one of the things that is part of this is the applicant is proposing some setbacks between the buildings. And they've provided a chart that indicates front-to-front is 15, rear-to-rear is 25, side-to-side is 15, and then side-to-rear is 15. What staff did is went into this plan and actually looked at what are, how close are these buildings to each other inside of this development? And on the front-to-front, virtually all of these are across the street from each other. So what we put there was just really not, not available. There, there would be no two structures front-to-front that could, are shown close to 15 feet here. The rear-to-rear, the closest one in a rear-to-rear is 31.5 feet. So just to let you know, the applicant is proposing a standard of 25 feet. I guess what that means is in the future, if there's an addition to one of the units, that they could be as close as 25 feet. There is no, no two structures currently that would meet that 25-foot setback. They're, they're greater than that. And then the same is true with the side-to-side and the side-to-rear, that the proposed standards they have, certainly these structures would comply. In fact, these structures are further apart currently than what they're proposing for setback standards.
Any thoughts from you guys on that? Would you consider just making your minimums what you've proposed?
Yes.
You think that could happen?
Yes.
And just eliminate these proposed?
Yes.
Would everybody be okay with that?
Yes.
Page nine. Troy, there's just a little comment. Each building will be placed, on page nine, first paragraph, last sentence, each building is placed a minimum of 25 feet from the edge of the roadway. Is that just a note?
Yeah. So it's a couple of things that are going on here. The, the way their roadway, and I'm going to zoom in on this area here. So these units, the driveway would be 25, there's no road right-of-way. These are just, we're just talking the actual physical pavement of the road. These units are 25 feet. The garage would be 25 feet back from the actual pavement of the road. The units on the other side, however, this slightly darker gray color represents a five-foot sidewalk. So then these units are 25 feet, not from the roadway, but from that sidewalk. So each of these driveways has 25 feet of potential parking space between the garage and either the sidewalk or the road.
And that's a minimum of 25?
Minimum. Yes.
Tom?
Troy, I had a question. So the sidewalk is only proposed to be on the one side. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that's what we're seeing in the gray is the sidewalk. I think when we get to sidewalks later, I'll probably have some questions on
Okay.
the road itself, but thank you.
Okay. Any questions on any of that? Okay. So now we're at building height. We have a minimum 35 feet or a maximum 35 feet. Again, that's getting into those commercial office standards. They're 12, so something there that we look at, but doesn't really apply in this particular one. Item seven, parking and loading, probably another item we should talk about, Troy?
Yeah. I'm, I'll just stay on this page. So per our ordinance, they're required to provide two parking spaces for each dwelling unit plus one additional space for each four units. Certainly they have the garages. There's two spaces there. They have two spaces on the driveways as well. And then they have in certain locations, specific off-street parking spaces. This is an example of one. These, these exist. There's a total of 37 of these types of spaces throughout this development. A couple of points just to hit on, the, the width of these streets is such that there is no, the applicant is proposing there'd be no parking on the street. So cars could not park parallel style on this, on this internal street network that they have. So cars would have to park either on the driveways, garages, or in these designated spaces. These designated spaces, just to make you aware, are nine feet by 18 feet. So there's, the normal parking space here in Heartland Township is 10 feet by 20 feet. So they're requesting that these spaces be slightly narrower and shorter than what we would normally see in other developments. So I guess that's a question for the planning commission. There's, there's a couple of things in there and, and that's really for the planning commission to decide how they feel on this.
Troy, is that in commercial where it's 10 by, what were the dimensions again?
10 by 20.
10 by 20. Would that be commercial or residential?
Yeah. Well, you're not, no, single-family, we don't go out to a single-family home and require them to have a 10 by 20 space, but generally their driveway would, would count. But if you had a multi-family condominium project or apartment project, yes, we would, we would require those spaces to be 10 by 20.
We've been doing them that way for a long time. Is there any objection to using the township standard?
None.
Would everybody be in favor of doing that or suggestions on how to accomplish that?
I'm just going to say, I really, I know here in Heartland Township, the cars are bigger, so that 10-foot width, you know, I don't like it. I want to minimize impact on our land and it, 9 by 18 in most communities work, but I know here in Heartland, we've gone to that 10-foot and just by the size of the vehicles here tends to kind of warrant it, just a comment, because I see both sides of it.
I would prefer the 10 by 20.
I would too.
We just have big pickups and big SUVs in this town.
They get bigger and bigger.
They do. So if we could change that.
Which I do now have to go to the width of the driveways because I drove, put, put my car out in my driveway this, today, tonight. I measured it and a 16-foot wide driveway, you can't fit your two cars side by side and get out. I, I tested it. You know, my, my car's about six foot four wide and that, that would have given me eight feet for both of us to get out on either side. So eight minus six foot four is like one foot, whatever. One of us can get out and the other one, we're getting on the grass, we're getting on something else. So that 16-foot, though I, I like, again, less pavement, it's not going to work, especially in the wintertime too, when we start to shovel and snow and, so I, I know that we've looked at some of your other communities and I think your drives are wider there because the cars seem to fit better. I don't know if this is something newer, but I just don't know if you have any cases, you know, where that really works. We were counting on that parking, which I know we got to talk about that, you know, for when you have guests, you know, I've got a guest, this guest party this weekend, I've got 65 people coming. That's not a big party. If that happened here, where do they go? Where do they fit? They can't park on the road. They, they've only got, in the report, it said 22 scatter spaces. You said 37, but where do my guests go? Where do they park? How does this work? Just a question. I don't get it, you know, and I know you do this all over, so something I just want to understand there.
Do you seem to have parking issues in your complexes?
Not typically, we don't. Again, we've been doing this, building our neighborhoods since, you know, about 30 years now. And to your point, sometimes, you know, people do have parties.
Right.
But I will tell you that since we're not single-family and the vast majority of our residents are seniors, empty nesters and professionals, that, that type of party, if you will, is very limited and we have really never had that problem. We do space out the parking throughout the neighborhood.
Right.
So I'm just letting you know that that really has never been an issue.
Well, okay, so again, here, I'm senior. I'm, you know, professional, but I'm having this party. What would I do if I lived there? What, what would I do right now?
Well, if you had 65 people?
Yeah.
I don't think they could all fit in your resident, in our apartment.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to be flip it. I'm just saying that, you know, we don't
So that's part of the limitation of just even the
Right.
the open space.
Right.
They could maybe be in your open space.
Right.
Okay. Didn't think of that angle. Just a comment, you guys. I'm just trying to understand.
What are you, what's your comment on the driveway then? Do you have a suggestion or do you have driveways that are 18-wide or?
Mine is 18 and that's about as, it's
16.
but, you know, it can't be 16. It does not work. You know, 18 is two parking stalls.
Yes.
Right? 18's a minimum and we were trying to do, us out here, a lot of 20.
Do you have 18s elsewhere?
No, just 16. No, just 16.
Huh.
Garage door width is 16, so you leave when you build up the width of the door.
Yeah, well, again, I mean, right out there is, is the 10-foot stalls, parking lots, we've all done, most are nine, and you're squeezing, getting out. Yeah, so I'm just commenting on that, I don't think 16 works, I measured it myself, I think it should be at least 18. You guys can comment.
Well, I do not like door dings. I will make that comment, and I drive a big vehicle,
Yeah.
and I will say that one of the things I do appreciate about Heartland versus running down to some of the more city-type atmospheres is that we accommodate for those. You pull into the Meyer parking lot, and you can pull in, and you can do it in one's, one curve, and you're in, and you can open your doors and get your groceries in, get them out, and you're not banging the car next to you. And I've had more people comment on why these, how, why all these parking places are wide. I know it sounds weird, but if you come from in Ann Arbor, Anovi, they don't do that. And so those narrow spots, you know, people are inching to get out of their car. I don't know the width of their spaces,
Yeah.
but, but I can say they're tighter than 10.
Right. Well, I know a car's over six foot wide, mine was six foot four, and when you do six foot four, plus what, one foot eight, that equals the eight foot your side. And I, you know, you gotta get two people out in one foot eight, just didn't fit. They're walking out onto the, maybe you, you're fine with it, they're getting out on the lawn, they're doing something, just a comment.
Hey, I would comment with you, Sue, is that, I, I would say that I agree with you, and I think we could all probably look at our own lives, is that the average garage door is 16 feet, and I'm curious, I know how my wife and I park, is we pull in, we have to kind of both go to the right and go to the left to be able to open our doors. So this is an example, probably, just, you know, a comment there also. If you're having success in other communities, I guess I'm curious, you know, maybe to go back to Larry, I don't know, we have larger cars or not, the chairman, if we have larger cars or not, your pictures shoot, do show smaller cars. So I, I would favor larger and go along with what Sue's prospect.
And, and you're squeezing through that opening, guys. You squeeze through the 16, but then when you get in your garage, it's wider inside so you can get out of your car. You know, put your cars in that doorway and try to get out, you won't be able to.
And that was my point, when we pull in, we literally, you know,
Yeah.
we move off because
Yeah.
the garage is wide enough.
You just can't. And that's fine, I mean, if you, but they'll be on your lawns or whatever, it's just a comment.
So do we want to leave them at 16, or are we looking
I recommend
to recommending something larger?
I recommend at least 18, that's what city parking lots are.
Yeah.
And they get out, you know, some door dings, but at least you can get out.
Tom, is that what you're saying?
So I would give that to Sue, because she's, with her experience, if 18 is the, what you feel is more proper in your, in your designs that you do, and I would just, I would go along with that.
Mike?
You guys good with that, or what do you think?
I wanted to ask, then, what size, how wide is the garage? You have a 16-foot wide.
Door.
16.
16?
The door is.
The door is.
The door.
The door.
But inside the garage?
Yes.
Where you get out.
It's probably 20.
20, probably inside, where you get out of your car.
I'm not sure what the inside is. I'm really not sure exactly what it is.
Well, now I have a concern with the size of the garage, and I, I can envision that if the garage is not wide enough, only one vehicle will be able to park in the garage. So that eliminates, one vehicle will be parking in the driveway, so this calculation of having two accessible slots for extra vehicles goes by the wayside.
I'm thinking inside your garage is 20, it's just typically
Yeah, the, the garages do hold two cars.
Yeah. I'm sure they're 20 inside, they could
It's a standard-sized garage.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, just look at the pictures. You've got a couple of feet of building,
Well, sure.
of solid structure on each side of the garage door. I'm guessing 20 inside, guessing.
So, and I would add to that, if that's said, 20 feet must be necessary.
Inside.
Inside. So why would that envelope be any different, whether it was inside or outside?
I know you can get it done with 18, you know, minimum, just
Then I propose, then, the minimum be 18 feet.
No, I'm just tired, Tom, but
Just make sure you put it in your conditions.
Okay.
Again, I'm not pro pavement, I just want it to work where everything's not just tore up, everyone's getting out, you know, into the landscape, and it's mud.
Okay. Landscaping, we've got a lot of detail coming on that here, real quick, so I'm gonna jump to number nine, which is open space, Troy?
Yep, I'm gonna try to, so they provided an open space plan. So again, this is their development, the green hatching would represent their open space, the blue color would represent the wetland area, this is their stormwater detention area. So generally, in a plan development, we try to get a 25% open space, they are at 42% open space.
Okay.
And this is how that open space looks, so this is where the planning commission, you know, generally has discussions on, does that look adequate? And so those are kind of the issues you've got on this topic.
Natural features, item 10, Troy?
So there are three, three existing ponds on this property, kind of sticking here with this open space plan. So this, there's one in the northwest portion, there's one on the south, and then one, it's not really colored, but there's a, a portion of one that comes on the property on the west side over here.
And they're not bothering, they're not, you're not doing anything to those. Item 11, sidewalks and pedestrian access. Troy, do you have the page, I don't have the page number that shows?
Yeah, it's, well...
I should've wrote that down, I apologize. It's in the upper left-hand corner, I think it, I think it, is it 78 or packet page? Maybe not, no.
This is, this is 77 here. I'm gonna zoom back out. So this is the
It's in the upper left-hand corner of the page, just scroll on down. There you go, whoop, scroll up, upper left, up, a little higher, a little higher, right here, right there. So this is the sidewalk and pedestrian access.
Yep.
Can you, have you got, you've used this before, haven't you, this particular system? You were gonna bring some pictures, or do we have some?
Yes, we emailed Troy some pictures of the integral sidewalk.
Okay.
So just, what they're proposing is a five-foot wide sidewalk right on the edge of the road. So what you're seeing here is the road here, or street, and then this is the sidewalk portion, and they're proposing a staining, and it obviously has a different cut, if I can call it that, to it.
Does that sound about right?
Yeah, typically, the integral sidewalk is four feet, but in this case instance, we agreed to make it five feet wide, and the main reason, or the, actually, yes, the main reason that we have gone with this type of sidewalk is for FHA compliance and accessibility throughout our neighborhood, and to the mailbox, leasing office, that type of thing. So when you get out and you're, you're on the sidewalk, you don't have to go onto a, you know, a separate sidewalk, you don't have the, you know, the raised curves, you know, that type of thing. So it just makes it much easier for someone that needs easier accessibility.
Okay.
We started doing that probably two, two years ago, maybe, and we have done other sidewalks, but, but normally, now this is what has been approved, and this is what our standard now is for FHA compliance.
Do you know, does the color go on after? Is it soaked in, or is it painted on?
Goes on after, because when we pour the road, we pour it as one pour, and so the 22-foot, plus in this case, the five-foot, is done all at one pour. And so then it's scored, and then it's stained.
And so that lasts? I mean, the color stays on the pavement?
Yes, I mean, I'm
It's soaking in, it's not laying on top?
No, 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 no. It's soaked in.
Okay.
And I'll just add that there's a different color between the pictures. The first picture, I believe it had not been stained yet. The second picture is the charcoal darker gray that I think is our current standard, and then the third picture is just a different color that we had used. So that's not a indication of age or anything, it's just variation of color.
And that could change.
Mm-hmm.
And how, how often have you done this, and how long have those been installed?
Um, in this particular one, this is, I believe, in Avon, Ohio, and that was probably done, because I, that was my project, I would say probably about six, seven, well, actually, would this would be like three years, this would've been one of the first ones that we did. As I said, we just started doing this about two or three years ago, and this is one of the original ones. It's held up very well.
So two or three years is as long as, and do they get snow in Avon, Ohio?
Oh, lots of it. Yes. So when they plow the road, they're plowing the sidewalk as well.
So, questions, the, the, the road standards, the design standards of the road, they travel then with the sidewalk?
That is correct.
So it's one pour?
That is correct.
Really, I'm just gonna say, it's a really wide, it's a wide road, and then you make part of it a sidewalk, by the sounds of it?
That's correct.
Five-foot.
And then we do not allow parking on the road, as I think we already discussed that, so we put up no parking signs. And then the, the speed limit in our private roads are 12 miles per hour, and that's also posted.
And the street drains are in the center of the road versus on the ends?
Yes. Inverted crown, yes, sir.
Can, can you go back to that picture of the cross-section?
Oh, yeah.
So that means that the roads are pitched to the, there's a pitch to the concrete towards the center?
Yep.
Then the drain.
Yeah.
So it's 26 feet across total?
Yes, 12, 27 in this case.
Yes.
Yeah, 27.
Simple math.
You're an engineer.
Thank you. How does that compare to our normal road width? Does someone have that data?
I think they're 26, and back a curb to back a curb, I think is 30.
So, I mean, it's a good question. If, if somebody were doing a private road, generally it's 20, minimum of 20, per the ordinance, 22 feet at a bare minimum. But then they typically have curb and gutter that are part of it, and then oftentimes a drainage system outside of that road width. So by the time you encompass their drainage system in the road, you're, well, they, private roads are required to be 66 feet with a total easement. This is, their interior roads are kind of a catch between a dedicated private road and an internal maneuvering lane, or, or in parking lot maneuvering lane, those generally are 24-foot wide. I don't know if that helps to answer.
For some reason, I was on the private road committee, it seems like in a normal subdivision in Heartland, your asphalt is 26, and then you got two feet a curb and two feet a curb, so your 30 back a curb to back a curb is my recollection.
Yeah.
And then, of course, if you get into sidewalks, then you got more on top of that.
I, again, I'm just pointing out what the bare minimum are. I think as you get into subdivisions where you have more than 24 lots, then I think it does go up to 26-foot wide.
I gotta circle back to those photos, because look at the driveway width, guys. See that one? It's not going through the garage doors. And the next photo showed the same, but you see how it's wider? I'm sorry, but I, and then you've got, yeah, another shot, I think there's one more, there you go, it's not going to the garage doors. Just need that extra width.
And so in that example, the garage door is probably 16 feet?
Probably.
And so I would guess that
Yeah.
the driveway's 18.
And, and this is one of your developments?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
It, it kind of almost looks from that picture that there's been a strip of concrete poured, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the road width, I'm just gonna comment on your roads, your 22 feet, and then your sidewalk, the extra five, a 27, it is a little, was a good question, Tom, it's a little less concrete that we ask for than here are normal standards, which I'm for, and the 12 miles an hour, you know, slow development, driving makes sense. I think having that color that you were talking about, the topical color added, it's gonna be imperative that we keep that, because it not only keeps people, it tells the cars, here's pedestrian, it visually makes the road look smaller too, so that, and the only way that can work is that that color keeps being applied. It does fade over time, all, call it does, so maybe there's some kind of stipulation, I don't know what, that that color's the maintenance what, but I think it's gonna be important to pull that off. Otherwise, you get that wider look, people are gonna go faster, all of it. You know, I know you're, you're proposing that, I just feel like there's gotta be some guarantee that it will be applied and maintained, so you can get that color deviation.
Right, we do have to do maintenance on it, and we will do that, and as far as being FHA compliant, we have to do that.
Yeah.
So that is top of mind, but thank you for bringing that up.
So in your other parking, you know, those scattered guest parking spaces, in your plans, you show a detail kind of with a curb ramp to show for barrier free, but I'm wondering if those other spaces, that curb ramp doesn't apply, that's one of the details in your set, and those other parking spaces, is everything at grade, and you do wheel stops so that the cars don't park beyond, how does that work in those other? Yeah, see, there's the area two ramp, you know, don't keep that close.
So that is at the leasing office where we have our ADA spaces. And then I believe there's another detail on the sheet, maybe at the top, maybe to the right, no, there's not. We do a thickened edge walk, so it is raised.
Okay.
So we don't do wheel steps, it's, it's a
Okay, still contain them, just like a roll curb
Correct. It is, yeah, it's raised.
Just curious.
Now that's in front of the sales offices, how about those scattered parking spots?
Yes, it is.
Same thing?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Are there any more comments on sidewalks and pedestrian access?
I probably do, yeah. So I might direct it to you, Sue, so the FHA compliance I'm referring to, is this for folks with barriers? Is that, what, what does this actually come down to, or talk about the sidewalks?
So they have to provide an accessible route from each unit to the leasing office to any amenity on-site, and that has to be a hard-scape surface, so it can't be mulched, it can't be, it has to be paving, paving. And then they have to provide an accessible route to the public right-of-way. And the way finances work out with FHA, they have to be compliant with that, so everything has to be 100% accessible.
So hence the five-foot walkway that you had mentioned, correct?
Yes.
Are there any other questions on that component?
So I, yeah, I do, I wanna make a comment, I guess, so
Yep.
Troy, if you can go to page 14, please. Kind of back up a little bit. That would be number five.
14 in the packet, or 14 in?
Uh, three, less than this. I get that right, Larry?
Well, the packet page is the square on the bottom.
It was 17, yeah.
Yep.
So number five.
It's 17, or?
No, you're, you're
No, Avon is five, right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, being that this is so, I'm going to say so different for Heartland, the road and the sidewalk, the width, I guess the notation I want to go to is in number five, developments shall be developed to be harmonious and harmonious existence with the pre-existing historical and natural features in the township. So this is different for us, right? This is, I don't know how much teeth that really has, but what does harmonious existence mean and pre-existing? So a lot of our neighborhoods have sidewalks with a strip of grass between them. And so this is very different for us. So I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on that, but there's something that we're used to and that is that in Heartland. And I'm not saying that this isn't a good way to go. And the idea that Sue has of, you know, the concrete or the walkway being painted a different color, I think, you know, these things kind of all do add up and maybe, maybe it is the right way to go. But I want to make sure that we, you know, stay, consider, consider these things. And so, again, that was just a comment, so I don't know if there's regarding the sidewalks. Jason to the street.
My concern would be safety. I mean, there's really nothing there to, you know, prevent, you know, somebody from hitting a kid that's riding their bike on that sidewalk where they might look down at their phone for a second. I mean, they're not hitting a curb, they're not hitting any different material to show them that, you know, they're going off the road.
I agree, and I agree that with Sue's comment, the color distinction would certainly help in this situation. But to know that that's going to be maintained, and I still think that it's going to be an issue where people, like you said, if somebody's not paying attention, the color doesn't matter in that situation. So I would have concerns with that as well.
We are on still page 10. We're at, now we're in a different section. This is requirements of the preliminary review. These are items that are part of the review, but were not brought up as of yet. This is where we get into a little bit of the traffic topic as number one, for the benefit of those listening or those here tonight. They did present seven traffic studies from similar type developments that they have. And the trip generation in the morning and the afternoon, the rush hours, if you want to call them, the peaks are not close enough to demanding a traffic impact study. It's 148 might seem like a lot. We go through traffic studies and when they do traffic studies, it determines what improvements or what changes need to be made. And 148 apartments does not hit the threshold of needing to require a separate traffic study in itself for this particular development. Any questions on that? Troy, anything you want to add to that?
No, not really. They relied on other developments that they had, as well as the, what's called the ITE trip generation manual to, and that's fairly common, that manual is used in trip generation estimates. So I'm not a trip generation engineer or anything, but it seems fairly consistent.
Okay. Any questions on that? Item two was fiscal impacts. On packet page number 32, there was a letter provided from the applicant. Are there any questions or comments on that? Okay. Vehicular circulation. Troy, I think we send this one back your way.
I'm going to get to a better site plan. I'll zoom in on this one. There's a little delay in this. Okay. So this is the road network layout. So as you can see, all of the access of this development goes out to Heartland Glen. There's two access points on to Heartland Glen Lane. And then they certainly could go south. That would just go down to the clubhouse and they'd have to turn around and ultimately would come north on to Cundy. And then right near where that intersects with Cundy would be a connection to M59. And it's primarily a loop road with a few other roads in between. That's their vehicular circulation on this development.
Okay. And then in regards to the Heartland Glen Lane maintenance agreement, anything other than just your general comment of needing something?
So our comment in that situation is, for many years, I think it's like 30 years, it's been for just a golf course. And we don't require every property owner to have a maintenance agreement with themselves. But now, if this development moves forward, we are recommending that they obtain a maintenance agreement with the Heartland Glen Golf Course for the maintenance of this road between these two property owners. And that would be part of the final PD to verify. You never know where the relationship can go between the property owners. And our goal is to ensure that this road would be maintained so we can get public safety vehicles down there, as well as the residents, the future residents here will be able to access their homes.
Any questions on that, comments? So next up, we're up to landscaping and we'll just hit these as a bullet point. The first item up is canopy trees along internal roadways. Any comments on those? Turn to our landscape person.
I feel you need to add more trees to be closer to our ordinance. I think there's several places you can add more street canopy trees. So I'd like you to give it another go and try to get closer to our requirement of every 30 feet. You know, I know you've got a pattern there where your drives are and openings, but I see many opportunities to add more trees. And I don't know why you wouldn't. By adding trees, it encloses the road, it helps with our safety concerns. I'd like you to move your trees closer to the edge of the road. Right now in the report, it says they're 10 feet maybe away from the sidewalk or the road. Get them five feet away. You know, that's very reasonable. As Tom had mentioned, a lot of our communities, we've got that lawn strip, it's only five feet wide anyway. We get the trees within five feet, it's going to be closer to the road. Create that, you know, canopy over the road, slow things down, give a lot better environment. Also, you mentioned that you'd like to use a smaller tree instead of our ordinance. And I'd like to stay with our three-inch caliper minimum. You know, you guys commented that the two and a half, size smaller would be more, live better, you know, whatever, that the three-inch tends to not live as well or distrust or whatever your reasoning is. You know, no, I believe we can do the three-inch and, you know, you get the right quality, the trees will live. So I don't see why we would step down from our requirements. I'm just asking that we stay.
Sue, is the canopy tree issue then and the closeness helping you, you're saying, with that five-foot grass area not being there?
It does.
In the illusion?
It gets closer to the street. You know, a while ago, we all had looked at the development, the trees were about 100 feet apart from one side of the street to the other. By your streets being smaller and narrower, removing the trees in, we won't have that big wide open highway feel. So I think that will help, you know?
Okay. Any questions, comments on that?
My comment would be that I would support that, right, to give that feel that we're talking about, that maybe that neighborhood feel.
Right.
And more of the canopy and maybe slow down to the 12, 12 miles an hour.
Help.
Okay. Item B, buffering and screening. Any comments on that?
I think like Michelle earlier, you talked about, you know, our buffers, our perimeter buffers. We've got to kind of look at each one and get the right width that's required. I know on the north, we were shy of that buffer. I know there was discussion that you were going to maybe provide an easement. But these buffers around this property, everybody in here, you know, we're looking at, you know, what these buffers should be, what our ordinance requires. And, you know, I know that right now what's proposed isn't what our ordinance requires for buffering. So I don't know if we want to tackle either one.
Well, I'd just make the comment, I would agree for the two, the north and maybe the east side of the property. But the south and the west side of the property are still the golf course.
They are.
And as you saw, they are a substantial distance away from those homes. There was a question, I'll just make a general comment. Somebody said, we'd like to know what's going to happen to this golf course. This has been for years, well, it's been since this sewer was done, which was '04. This is a residential golf course community. It may not happen in my lifetime or yours, but it will be a modified golf course. The holes will move, streets will go in and houses will be around it. That is the extent of the detail that there really is at this point in time. So it is a residential golf course community, is the future and the master plan for this development. And as Troy was saying, trying to answer the question, the planning commission and the board decided that we were going to put the heavy density at the north end, closest to 59 in the infrastructure, the road access, the sewer, the water, all those things up close, because that is good planning. And as we move further to the south, then this type of development won't work. We won't approve something like this. There you're probably going to find more transitioning to condominiums, transitioning to single-family homes, those types of things, because they're going to move from, it's an overall four lots per acre, and they have six or seven, six or 700 REUs on there. So that's six or seven houses in its entirety over 400 acres. And it will encompass the golf course. So trying to stay on topic, but I wanted to get that question answered because it's really not in the review letter here. But when we talk about the buffering, there is substantial amount of development going to go to the south and west of this. And I don't know that I would buffer this on those two sides any more than it already is, because it's out on the golf course and there's going to be more development coming behind it. But I certainly think the north property line and the east property line need to be covered. Personal opinion. So I don't know if anybody has any input on that or thoughts.
I agree with what you said.
I do just have a comment. On this northern portion here, I touched on it already, that there is a, we currently do not have the landscaping or the easement for, that's actually off of this property, it's on the northern property. So I just want to reiterate that as part of that, there's a landscape easement that would occur on these northern properties up here. And just reiterate, when we get to the final PD, that those should be part of that packet.
So going back to your question on the buffering and the screening and that along the east property line, since we don't really have the plan on the north, if we don't have the easement in its entirety, what is the east side going to be?
So the north side, we just kind of hold still right now until that easement's shown and then we deal with that buffering, what's appropriate?
Well, the property owner has submitted a letter that he has said he would agree to that easement. They just haven't, they didn't want to put together the formal easement document, not knowing where this project's going to go. So basically, what they're saying is they will, they will provide that in the future. I just wanted to reiterate that that should be part of the final PD.
So we're kind of waiting for that for later and we'll deal with that later. On the east side, the east side's on abutting the roadway. So it's kind of like a green belt kind of situation that we would choose that way?
That's a good, good question. I don't know that, you know, this is not, it has not been approved as a private road. So there is no, there is no particular standards for this. Certainly, the setback is not to the road, but to this, so their setback quite a ways from this eastern property line. So this landscape area in between here and the road is really something about how does the planning commission feel about that? Is that sufficient? Is that adequate throughout here?
So that's the main exposure. Everybody going up and down that road is looking at the development from that road.
Yeah, they've proposed to dress up these, these units with a different facade here.
Like the front, it says front. And on your plans, on your architecture plans, it shows the porches and it kind of shows a part of the sidewalk and then they kind of cut it off. Is there any sidewalk going out to Heartland Glen Road or is it just the porches?
So as you mentioned, Sue, yes, all of the units that are facing Heartland Glen are the Haydenwood style unit, which has a front porch, it's a front-facing, more friendly exterior that we use often on main roads. So, and then we did agree to install the five-foot sidewalk along Heartland Glen. However, we do not have access paths out to each, from each unit to the sidewalk. But that would be a front-facing unit, so that that would be facing Heartland Glen.
I would almost think all those sidewalks might break up some great-looking landscaping. I don't know what you thought.
No, no, I was just wondering if you went to their Hayden plan view in their architecture set, that you showed your porches, then you had like a start of a walk and there was a cutoff and I wasn't sure if those, yeah.
Oh, yes.
So what do you think of the landscape plan along Heartland Glen Road? I mean, it's not really screening, it's probably more, like you said, green belt, it's a front.
Like you're making it look like the front yard, right? Kind of, so it's the exposure to everybody who, you know, is going to go back and forth. You know, I know you've got quite a few trees out there on the plan. I don't know if you want to show the landscape plan, but you've definitely got the quantity of trees between your shade trees. As far as your foundation plantings, I guess I want to understand, because there are places within your community that you're showing like eight foot wide of stone. So I guess I don't think anybody really wants to see that house foundation treatment along those facades being handled. Do we know? In your packet, you had a kind of a typical, but it didn't match with the front of those buildings. We can look at those pages.
I'm sorry, you want?
So there's the landscape plan, you know, and that kind of along the roadway where they've got a lot of trees.
Yep. I'll zoom in.
Yeah, and it meets what our green belt tree requirements asked for. You know, kind of counted it out, but you've got quite a few trees, kind of naturalistic along that edge. When you go, Troy, to a couple sheets later, they have a typical landscape for, I think, the different models. I think there might be one more sheet. Yep, that sheet. And we'll look for Haydenwood, right? That's the model. And you kind of look for the front side. And see how it shows right there where it doesn't really show the porches? Because you guys kind of have changed that side, I think, with some little porches on that side?
That's how they are built. So they're kind of like set in with a small porch? That's accurate.
Okay, so we're going to have that kind of landscape along with the trees?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that meets our green belt requirements. I think it's a front, you know, a good front yard, a good exposure to the street. If you can avoid putting the stone in those beds up front, maybe we could ask for that. We typically don't like seeing stone. I know you guys are proponent around your units internally. I guess for our front, we like not to see, you know, big expanse of the stone, at least along the road. Because that's in our ordinance. You guys have commented, and I'm just trying to make it as nice, but, you know, fitting in with our neighborhoods, have that nice front image, which I know you're making a great effort to try to do.
So a question I had had was, Heartland Glen Road?
Why?
That's the name of the road.
It is now.
It is now.
Lane.
Lane. So will that service the entire inevitable development? Will that be the main thoroughfare into whatever ends up south of this development?
I don't think they have a plan for that.
Okay. I'm just wondering how wide that road may inevitably be, how much traffic? I'm just wondering how wide that road may inevitably be, how much traffic it may inevitably carry, is it going to be just a two-lane all the time? And then what is the, how far are the front faces of these units off of that curb? And I'm assuming that's going to be not like the sidewalks that I was belaboring earlier. And so, yeah, the plan isn't, it's not, we're not way out there, I guess I did that, just...
I think they're 30 feet off of here at the closest point, but one of the comments that we've talked to the applicant about is providing a connection to this property here to the east. This is a 40-acre piece that is part of a special planning area that was in, was out, was back in, and is now out of the Newberry.
But why would that be Redwood's problem?
Yeah. Well, I'm getting to remember Murphy's comment of, would this be the only connection out for that? And my answer is, at some point, there will be a connection to the east, which will provide another connection out of this entire development. But that's down the road in the future. Does that help address your question?
Yeah, I kind of, you know, to look into the future, the answer is, we don't have yet, is maybe where I shouldn't be going, but...
When they go to put ultimate build out here, they're going to have more than that access. It'll never get approved with just that.
And once the road is in, it's probably in, and I'm thinking, is that...
Well, it's already in. They're not changing the road that's in. They're just putting driveways off of it. The driveway that's there is there, they're not building a new road now. Heartland Glen Lane...
That will stay as...
Is the way it is, and it's not changing for this development, doesn't need to. At some point, as we all know, when we develop, we approve these residential developments, you get the number of units, you need more access, you need more road, you need more this. You'll never get the 600 to 700 homes and condos and apartments that are going to ultimately go on this program to come out of one road. It just will never get approved. They are going to ultimately need, the golf course owner is going to ultimately need to have a master plan before he gets too far down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Item C is detention landscaping, detention retention basins, any comments on that?
The planning department came up, you know, and said that you guys were short on the counts of the plants. It looked like with your map, you were counting on a portion of that detention pond that's to the south, kind of south edge, is that wetland, you're kind of counting on some of that for your plantings around the pond? I think was what the difference in the math was.
That existing.
Did you guys notice how they wrote up that letter, the department? And I guess sometimes we've allowed existing plantings and wetlands, and it's natural, and it's a pond, just to be part of it, versus try to make this, you know, plants in between them. So I don't have a problem if there are plantings on the wetlands to kind of make them merge together, I think it would look better, you guys, you know, if you agree. So I think we could give them a credit for that natural area, if it's left natural, let's let it be, and let's let it try to blend together. That's our big idea. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, you're fine with that? You guys fine with that?
Yeah.
All right, apartment landscaping, you kind of talked about foundation plantings a little bit there. We don't really have much of a requirement on that. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that, Sue? Anybody else want to add anything?
Please, you guys.
Hey, you know more than I know. I am on page 13, architectural building materials. Troy, you want to pull up a couple of the elevations, so that those in the room can see what these look like? And would you like to take a moment to explain the exteriors you've used, and how you're using your high-profile sides and those types of things on...
I'm just looking to see if there's a color one.
I think we sent you some email showing some different, an email today, Troy?
Or even the sidewalk photos do show some units, but...
Yeah. Those are the bad.
Yeah, and then the front, I think, is, those are those Hayden ones that we mentioned with the front porch.
So these are the ones on Heartland Glen Road?
Yeah, that's what you'll see on Heartland Glen, you can see the landscape in there, and then there'll be trees obviously in front of that. But that's how it's inset, you know, so...
Yeah, yep, I misunderstood that.
And we're not proposing any red-colored.
No. No barnyard red.
All right.
It just happened to be on the slide, so go ahead.
So, as you can see with these photos, we have six different interior unit types, which translates to different facades. We use a mixture of stone, vinyl, and then shake. We have indicated on a map, architectural features map, that shows the colors that we're proposing, the color schedule, as well as the areas where we would put a high-profile side, which would have a little bit more stone along it. So in the prominent areas of the development where that would be seen. Also, as you can notice, there's slight deviations in the color between the units, which, you know, we think provides a kind of a nice look as you're driving down the street, as well as, you know, someone might say, "I live in the green house," or "the brown house," or whatever. So it's the way we've done our developments, we've kept our color palette pretty neutral and natural. We want it to, as we've mentioned, we own these developments for a long time, 31 years so far, and want them to look good always and not be trendy 10 years ago. So we tried to pick a very traditional, attractive color palette, so...
Up front, this was a pad I can hold stuff.
You gotta let the broken foot lady have it.
This is, yeah, that's a weathered wood shingle color that we typically use.
These are the vinyl colors that we use, and again, I think Troy mentioned that we did, like a sheet that kind of shows us the colors, but these are...
And this is the type of limestone, I believe it's Ohio light beam limestone. And that's what we use, you know, kind of...
So regarding the stone, there was some question on, does it, does the stone go on the front, does it go on the side, does it go on the rear, does it...
Goes on the front and goes on the side.
On the sides?
High-profile sides, there's the stone, extra stone.
So how profile, how high-profile have you, were there ever any road frontage?
Well, if you're driving down the road and you see the side, you know, you can even better.
Excuse me.
Troy, there is a slide in there that has all the, this colored site plan.
I couldn't tell you what page it's on, but...
I wish I would have.
That's a better illustrative of where those high-profile sides.
I think it's towards the end.
It's got to be up, yeah.
It's when it tied to...
Yeah. The color...
It's right after...
The rendering.
The rendering, the main rendering.
Not this.
Yeah.
Aha.
There it is, right here.
Okay, so everywhere you see a red is what we had planned for our high-profile side, and we had added a couple more along Heartland Glen at the suggestion of staff and the review committee. And those are the colors that we're proposing within that color palette, maybe not all of them, but a selection.
And then the color code codes the type of unit on the plan.
So the high-profile sides get the stone, and the sides that are not colored pink, that are not high-profile, they do not get the stone.
The extra stone, correct.
I think your high-profile side, when I was reviewing this, the gables also shake on these prints.
I believe that's...
On the high-profile side.
Yes, and I believe there's a detail in the elevations that shows standard as well as high-profile.
Question, you, Troy, they sent some pictures today that had some rear yards on it, and I got a question on siding. These are, you're using a, I think that's called a double four, whatever, a four-inch vinyl siding, stop right there. This one is not. Are you, do you use other siding material besides that double four? See how wide and tall that is? This is your Texas Township Michigan project.
That is correct.
What is that siding, do you know?
Yes, it's a, it's a piece, it's a PVC composite. And we don't use that very often, we typically like to stay with the premier vinyl, but that is in Texas Township, and actually, that's one of the few ones that we've used that on. There's also another type of siding that we're looking at that is very, very similar to that from Select. And we're looking at that vendor as well. We normally go, again, we like to stay with the vinyl, it wears very well, we've used it for years, as Emily said, but occasionally, we will make a modification.
I noticed more of the four versus a six-inch wide board is what I noticed. I think the six-inch wide looks more like wood siding or cement siding than the double four.
Yeah.
Personal opinion. Would that color, type of color palette be available in either the new product you're looking at, or...
Um...
Or a six-inch wide siding versus a double four?
I thought that was seven inch.
Or seven?
Yeah.
It's just not the four, I can tell that.
Again, since we're just looking at this, I don't want to misspeak, but yeah, that's seven inches. I don't want to misspeak and say that the colors that we are available, so I really don't know that as a, we just are starting, looking at this in the last few days as we...
Yeah, you're fine. I prefer the look of that, I don't know what everybody else thinks. The wider siding versus the four?
Is that like hardy board?
Yes.
I like that.
But this isn't hardy board. It is not hardy board, but it's got the look of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not.
Agreed.
It's PVC.
Right.
Composite.
I hope you got updated, you got to pay that every 10 years or something? So it forces you to do maintenance?
Yeah. The hardy board does.
So Chairman Fox, if I, we're talking about materials, but if I had other questions on the faces and/or the roofs, is this the time, or are we going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now.
Kind of a general, thank you, kind of a general question on, if I look at, is this the kind of wall, I guess we would see on the backside of a unit?
Oh, yes, typically, yes.
So, well, I'd like to back up. They sent some pictures, because their units they're proposing here have interior porches.
Some do, yeah.
And we have some pictures there.
You need to scroll back to the other pictures.
Yeah, don't leave that one out. And that site, just FYI, is currently like under construction, so that was maybe built within the last couple months, so there's active construction right around there.
I think they were part of the landscaping email or something.
Were they, the pictures that came today?
Are you talking about that sheet that had one side and the other, I believe, that?
There you go.
There you go, yes.
This is, this is the back of some of theirs.
Yeah, our units are the Willowood and the Breeze Woods, they have the screen porches. And then there's a little bit of patio out after that for your grill, if you want to grill out, and that way you're not going to grill outside.
This is the patio, this is the patio we're looking at, this small cement slab with the stone between?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
That would be with the screen and porches, the ones that don't have the inset porch are larger.
Yeah, I think they're eight by 10, patios, when they're not a screened-in porch.
The pad?
Yes.
What, that doesn't hit, rain can fall on, right?
Pardon me?
That rain can fall on, that's the pad?
Oh, yes, yeah, concrete.
Yeah, concrete, thank you. So I guess my comment would be is, and maybe this is a very fair picture right here, is that the long expanse, I don't know how to put this, the long expanse of that wall, to me, if we could add some character to it, like, if you look at the front of the building, right, this ties, this is the wall, and it's actually the roof, being just a long expanse of a flat plain, I'm just curious if there's anything that can be done. Now, the previous picture that was under construction that I could see, like the tieback, those were two different, you had two different roof pitches there, but they were still long, flat expanse.
Yeah, some of the buildings have to be stepped because of the topo.
Okay.
So they're 24-inch steps.
Yeah.
And that's why we have to do that. We don't always do it, because the topo pretty much tells us when we need to step and when we don't need to. But when we do step, but it does break it up some.
So there's a project on M-59 and Latson Road?
Yes.
That I think is yours? And so when I look at that, the backs and the roofs, it's just like large, flat plain. So I guess my comment would be, is, I'm curious if there's anything that can be done to add some dimension to that rear wall, maybe similarly to the dimension of the front wall, and/or anything to the roof pitches.
We can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Any other architecture comments? Let's take a look and run down these questions or comments that we had. Retaining ownership of the golf course, so the, they're only selling off, my understanding is, is this 27 acres. The owner of the golf course is going to retain the other 360 acres. Yes. I don't think we know the answer on a construction entrance, but it certainly would make sense that they just came in, I've seen Ben, that they'll come through their normal entrances. I've taken the time to visit some of their projects after they started coming, showing up here a year or two ago, and your construction's coming through your front entrance.
That is correct.
So they don't have a construction entrance, whoever had brought that up, in the ones that I saw. So there's also the potential, these are the buildings for the golf course, I'm not sure if there's the ability to use some of this, this is Mr. Yaldo's property, so I don't know if there's any ability to use some of this as part of the construction as well.
I would allow them, but the problem is, Cundy is already troubled.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know why they do that.
It's not the responsibility on me, but I can document what's in there.
Well, I don't think we require a construction entrance, I think there was just a question on it, and I think it was probably coming from the direction of a concern, where would these trucks come from? Are they going to come from Maxfield Road, are they going to come, you know, where are they coming from? But I think that showing the whole course and Troy explaining what corner this was in, probably most people understand the logical thing is M-59, Cundy, Heartland Glen Lane to your front door.
Yes.
They're not going to come down Maxfield, they're not going to come down Cundy.
Well...
Last year, we got a bunch of construction.
Yeah. When the, I don't want to get back and forth, when...
We're not from the golf course, not yours, but...
Yeah, you'll get construction on any road when you have development down the road from you. They just, the logical point for trucks to travel is going to be M-59, Cundy, to Heartland Glen Lane. It just is logical.
I actually think that is kind of more illogical, because it's a choke point going in and out right there. And you've got two other entrances that, when this is blocked off, because somebody's waiting to get out. So let's face it, everybody running down 59 is driving 70 miles an hour, and it's hard to get out on 59. So when you've got a dump truck or whatever there, and you've got two of them stacked up behind it, the third one is going to go down the same way, more than one's coming in, they can't make that turn then, if there's a truck there waiting to get out, that road's not wide enough for two trucks to pass each other right there. So they're going to go in down the other side, traverse down Cundy and in.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Someone asked, "Why are we considering apartments?" I guess it boils back to, they have a right to develop it, and they have 600 to 700 REUs to put out there.
What zoning is...
There's a zoning change after that. We don't have a lot of discussion going on now, but that was several years ago. This changed to a special planning area after that did. And it all revolves around these 600 to 700 REUs that are on that property, and trying to find a development that can fit within the community on 400 acres that's going to hold 600 to 700 houses on it, or residential units. And to put single-family homes up at this front meant we were going to probably end up putting apartments and condominiums as we got further into the development. And I believe that's probably the strategy that was used while we were all involved in the conversation, on the density being up at 59, and the less density to the south. Trying to protect those... and the less density to the south. Trying to protect those properties as you move further out that are larger in acreage, larger in size, and put the heavy density 500 feet off of M-59. So...
But then condos and stuff, apartments.
We don't get to pick that. That's not our choosing. It's...
Where are you to approve?
I just want to know that. As I understand about being more developed, I want the public to be aware, because a lot of people seem caught on the levers. I understand that you've been planning this for a while. What's the best way to be trapped?
Well, we'll answer, we'll let Troy answer that during planner reports, okay, Troy? We'll just keep it right on topic here. The zoning change comment came up. Anybody else have anything here? A lot of the apartment comments. Chemicals on the lawns. I don't know that we have. I don't know that we can or can't regulate lawn fertilizers. Do we have that ability?
That's a good question. We do not regulate anyone from, we don't have any regulations on the chemicals that could go on somebody's lawn. Every, do we have the ability to, there's two components to that. Could, one is, could we adopt an ordinance that does limit the chemicals that could go on the ordinance? Theoretically, that is potential. Then the other part of it is, the practicality part of it is, do we have the ability to have a staff out at everybody? We have 15,000 people. How, we just don't have the manpower to be at every single-family home, or every residential or commercial project to verify what chemicals they're putting on their property. We just would not have the person power to regulate that. That type of regulation would apply throughout the entire, would affect every single home in the entire township.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. It's more near the lake, so we're talking about that.
Yeah. All right, folks, we just, okay. I want to try and get this to a point here this evening. Troy, would you touch on the water? Just again, there was a question about water. Where are they getting their water? I know we touched on it, but could you hit that real quick with the installation of a water line?
Yeah. I'll use this one. Back out a little bit on it. This is an aerial of the golf course property. There is, not directly, but indirectly related to this project, is a proposal to extend water from about this area here, down M-59, that would service this project. It would not only service this project across M-59 as a project that has gone through the process as well. So it would serve both of those projects. Both, that project to the north of M-59, as well as this project here, have both been very upfront and said, if they do not have municipal water, they just, they can't, they can't come. They won't develop. So this project is tied into the success of that extension of municipal water. Does that help address it?
Yeah.
There is no community well. They're not going to be doing some other alternative water source that it would rely solely on the extension of municipal water. And if by chance that water could not be, then Redwood has made it clear that they just couldn't go forward with the project, as well as Pearl to the north. They've both said they cannot operate.
Okay. Any comments on any of that? Anybody else have anything else on this project? Any other comments?
Oh, there was a question. A gentleman asked, Troy, we do have an ordinance for the time of construction.
Yes, we do. We have a noise ordinance, as well as construction, as to when construction can occur. I don't recall what those times are off the top of my head. Something like maybe 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, something to that effect. So generally during the daylight hours.
Right. Okay. Where are you guys with this project this evening?
Well, I know, like Michelle earlier talked about deceiving the density, you know, what else? You know, why would we exceed the density?
I agree. I would, I was, I would come in on that again with the density. Hearing the concerns with the shortage of trees, driveway widths, setbacks, buffers, I, at this point, wouldn't, I'm not at a point where I would be comfortable approving that additional density, and without those items being addressed.
Okay. Mike?
Is there any way to move forward with this project by having those items mentioned or stated?
If they, well, I guess the question to Michelle would be if they correct the trees, if they fix the buffer, are you then in favor of giving them the, how many units is it, Troy? 12?
Uh, yeah.
12-unit bonus?
Not at this point, not without, not without seeing it.
Okay.
That's just my, my opinion on it.
Okay. Where are you, Sue?
I'm somewhere in the middle, but I kind of do want more of this addressed. There's just a lot on the table yet to see. So I guess I'd like to refrain from approval yet.
Okay.
I think Michelle's comment is very good regarding the bonus density. Is that, is that something that should be awarded at this point? I think that I would like to see more information, I guess, in the plan, how they might modify it, with the other points that were brought up tonight. So I would agree with Michelle Sue, yeah, I think.
Someone?
I agree with Michelle as well.
Okay. I agree with Michelle. My comment would be that, and that's why I was asking you the question, if they take care of the issues that we talked about, are you gonna give them the 12 units? And the reason, and what you need to think about is, if you don't put the 12 units in here, you're gonna put them closer to their homes. So that was my question on, are you going to, if they fix these items, are you going to give them the density they're asking for? And if you can't answer it now, you gotta be ready to answer it, because those, they're going to get 673, or whatever it is, REUs on that property. And if you, just a minute, if you put them off here, they're going south. So that's something we need to think about. All right. So can we get some revisions done?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. And we'll come back?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very...
I'd love to hear a few comments.
No, not right now. We're, okay. So we'll look forward to having you back.
So do we need a motion to table?
No, we don't need a motion to table it. They're just coming back?
Yeah. They're gonna have to make revisions to this plan. You want to see those revisions? Is that what I'm...
Then it's coming back after we see it. We didn't make it, we're not gonna motion anything.
So we had kind of set aside July 1, which is next Thursday, as a meeting, but it's doubtful we'll be able to, as a packet for that meeting, would have had to have gone out with the revised plans earlier today. So it is, like, unlikely July 1 would be a date. I'm guessing, just off the top of my head, just to let residents that are here be aware, it's possible the July 8 meeting, possible, we have a July 22 meeting, otherwise the August, first meeting in August, which would be the second Thursday. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but those are the likely dates that we would be looking at to bring it back.
And you can just keep track of that. You won't get a notice on that, because this was a public hearing, so you received a notice for this. You're not gonna receive anything in the mail on future meetings. So you can keep track of the, our meetings on the township website, heartlandtp.com. There's a tab, I think it says, Meetings and Agendas or something. You click on there, and it'll give you everything. Every piece of paper that was given in our packet is available online there. You can click on an agenda packet there, and you will see, that's actually how I get mine. I do it all electronic. So everything I have, you have, other than the items they passed out this afternoon or tonight. Okay, we'll look forward to them getting that back, and Troy getting this back on an agenda real quick afterwards, whenever it arrives. We will give them just a moment here, and then we'll move to call to the public. All right, let's move to call to the public. This is where, if you have any more comments, this is where you would make them.
Matt, Kanye again. I still have serious reservations about the screening of the properties as far as what we're going to actually see from our backyards, and how much of it we're going to see. So just something to keep in mind.
Okay. Sam, you get a turn, just like everybody else.
Nope.
I just want to ask, you said several times, it's a done deal, this is going to happen. If you don't get these 12 here, you're gonna get them somewhere else?
That's correct.
Is it all approved?
What's all approved is almost 700 residential units on that property, yes.
They were approved.
No, they have bought the, Troy, you probably best could explain it more than I.
Yeah. And it goes back a number of years. I think Mr. Yaldo pointed out, it was in 2004, he purchased what's called REUs. These are sewer residential equivalency units that go with this property. And I, it's, it's over 600. I'm not sure if it's quite up to 700, but it's definitely over, so he has paid, the township has sold him that number of residential, sewer residential units. There's a high likelihood of an expectation that he's gonna be able to use them. If the township sells him that, and then says, well, we're not gonna ever let you use them, that likely would not go good down the road. It's very likely we'd end up in litigation. And although I can't predict the future, it's just, the scenario there is not, does not look very good for the township. So there's been no approved plan. Nothing has ever been approved, but those units were sold. So if there's any expectation that, well, maybe they, they just will keep it a golf course, I would say that's highly unlikely.
Okay. And then, then back on the apartments, you didn't want me to speak, but...
No.
The, was there a meeting that we all missed that said we were no longer going with homes in that portion of the golf course, and we're going with apartments?
Troy, do you want to talk about the public noticing for that meeting?
Yeah, maybe we all missed it. I don't know.
Yeah. So there's a, it's a series of kind of some confusion between zoning and future land use, and what the current request is. A number of years ago, maybe two, three years ago, Mr. Yaldo brought to the township a request to rezone, I'm going from memory, about 70 acres in here, somewhere. It was in this northern portion. And in that, Mr. Yaldo had actually shown a layout, a potential layout, of a single-family residential subdivision. And at the time, the Planning Commission was aware that there's a number of REUs on this property, and Mr. Yaldo had brought that request, and that rezoning was essentially similar to the zoning to the west. So the Planning Commission recommended approval, and the board recommended, or actually approved it. So that was the zoning change that did occur. However, essentially, Mr. Yaldo is abandoning that plan, and Mr. Yaldo is no longer interested in a single-family residential development. And what he's brought now is Redwood's proposal. And Redwood's proposal of their development is apartments. The planned development process allows for certain number of dwelling units, whether they are owner occupied or rental occupied. There's no distinguishment in the planned development process itself. So what you're seeing now, it's not a zoning, when it becomes a planned development, then it's a zoning change. But what you're hearing now is that process that's ongoing. There's been no meeting or no decision prior to that. This is that process to allow apartments. You're, you're involved in that.
And that's what, you'll decide whenever the next meeting?
As part of this, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, just wanted to first say, I appreciate you explaining that difference. That actually is really helpful, because we were here low those many years ago. We were all younger when that first development came. But I under, I appreciate you guys explaining all this stuff. I actually find it really helpful. I just wanted to add, the thing about the chemicals when you were talking, it is something to consider for future developments within Heartland, that when chemicals are going into bodies of water, that it's something, I, I'm not asking you to regulate every household in Heartland, that's ridiculous. It's the ones that have run off into the lakes. If you look at Silver Lake, which is on the golf course, it's full of weeds. I invite you all to look at it. It's literally not a lake, it's weeds. I live on the golf course. I know that there's chemicals, we have to, Maxfield Lake has to spend hundreds of dollars every year for weed control. So I'm just saying, as an environment thing, to think about, perhaps, your bodies of water, there can be some sort of guidance, regulation, whatever, for these chemicals, because it affects, you know, the drinking water affects a lot of things. And I'm just curious, how many cars does trigger a traffic study? It was interesting, you said 140 units does not, how many, what triggers a traffic study? What's the density that has to trigger a...
I'll get you the answer before the end.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Okay. And I wanted to also commend you, actually, about the parking spaces. I agree. That's actually a great thing in Heartland. But, and also, I was a little offended when somebody said there's senior people who live in, are going to live in these places, and they don't get together, they don't have parties, they don't have people. That's a ridiculous thing to say. I mean, it's, older people have parties and get togethers too. So when you're talking about the density or parking, which I thought were very valid, you have to think that people will have people over. Okay, well, thank you. This has been really informative, and it's a great process. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I suddenly leaned over to me and said, we have parties in your own.
I'm a little bit curious about the extension of the municipal water, because you said without this, neither one of these developments are willing to go in. But who's paying for the extension of that? Is it the township paying for that, or are these developments paying for that? I mean, is it ultimately my taxes that are gonna be paying for him to have his development?
Troy, you want to answer that real quick? Usually, we don't do this, but I think this is good exchange.
So that, that will be in a, and I'm not involved in the water extension, so I'm kind of on the periphery of it. The water extension will be paid for by water REUs. I've already mentioned sewer REUs that exist on this property. There are also, there's called water REU. So every home that's connected to water and sewer would require one water REU and one sewer REU. So those REUs are what will pay for the extension of the water. And Mr. Yaldo is heavily involved in that initially. There's no plan to have the general taxpayers pay for this, but then...
That explains his gold bag comment. So, because he is bringing that down through his REUs. So then that brings one other question, because they've already marked this line out down Cundy Road. They've staked it. So... So is it going to be like the sewers? Anybody that's on that road, are they going to be forced to connect to that water as we were forced to connect to a sewer?
I don't have a definitive answer on that question.
That doesn't affect me. I don't live on that road.
The general philosophy on that is, we wouldn't require you to hook up instantaneously. However, that would be available for anyone that had problems with their well and wanted to hook up, or if there were new development that occurred and they were within close proximity to the water, then those properties would be required to hook up to the water. But it is not the general overriding philosophy to require homes that are already sitting there and functioning very well with their current water system to abandon that and hook up.
Okay. That's kind of the question. Because if you do bring it down to Main Road, it's only a matter of time for you want to push it into the neighborhood as well. You know, I mean, when they did the sewers, it was kind of a, I don't know, it was kind of a, if you look at one of the other communities, I'm trying to think now, they were done by the same company. It was Bass Engineering, I think it was, that did our sewers? When they did that, they also did a community down by Hamburg and basically for the exact same amount of money that those people paid, they got sewer, water, and paved streets. We just got sewer. So, you know, I don't want to see another special assessment and I don't want to see another bill that multiplies as much as this sewer bill multiplies every, you know, every quarter. So that's all, that's kind of my concern, is to keep the cost of living here down as well. So, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Come on up.
Okay. So I'm just a little confused as far as the renderings or the pictures that were shown.
Sure.
What, will the front of these apartments have the garage on the front or the back?
Front.
The front?
The street side.
The street side?
That is the front.
Okay.
Like a typical home.
Okay.
So they have a front door. It'd be like a front door and a two-car garage and, you know, there's probably a window in there and...
Right.
Attached.
So the front of...
That's the front.
...will be facing Heartland Glen Lane?
No.
The back?
They are proposing a handful of different looking units, from exterior to interior features. The units that they're proposing to front Heartland Glen Road are different in that the back of the unit looks like a front.
Oh, okay.
But they still have the garage with the front door on that side. So I think if you're visiting them, the way I see it, is that correct? Your guests would still park in the driveway and come in that, this side of the home.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't quite look like that on the backside, those units, but yes.
Okay. So then the backside of their units, is it going to be the screened-in porches or those awful-looking AC units with meters?
Some, some, well, first of all, the backs are all internal. You can't see the backs from the external of the development. But the second thing is, I think the renderings probably show it best. They have a variety of units. Some had screened-in porches, some had regular patios.
So that's where the buffer, and like I said, I don't even live on the golf course, but I'm thinking for the people that are going to see these apartments, the back...
Will the back be facing our house?
Will be facing...
There are going to be more developments between, when you get your 600 to 700 units, there will be something else between this and your house.
Yeah, we're real happy about that.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying that that's what's going to happen. That's why we're putting the, that's why he's proposing and the township agreed, to put this heavy density up here, so that when you get closer to you guys, there, this doesn't happen.
The problem is though, is your heavy density is literally right on top of me.
So, so I don't, we don't want to go back and forth.
Fifty feet between the closest two that you are...
All right. Okay. All right, everybody, who's got the microphone? How are you?
No, I do want to appreciate, I know we can't stop this, I know it's a done deal, but I do appreciate people, the extra trees, making that ugly, listen, my college dorm room looked better than that backside of that. Making it a little cuter, it's, I mean, that we can do, that you guys can do. The extra buffer, that we can do. So thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. Any more call to the public? Sam?
The most important issue is the issue of water. And we are committing to 47% of the cost of that water to get to our property. And it translates into over $2 million. And I got the call about two months ago to drop the $2 million at the township. I said, Bob, are you crazy? I got to get some kind of approval, Bob. That's Bob West, the township manager. I said, that cannot happen unless I get approval because I've been bitten once, I cannot be bitten twice. Because we already have dumped $4 million in the sewer district. And there is a lift station that has not been even running for one minute, one minute. Not a drop of water has gone into a lift station that I helped, I helped secure the land from a fellow that I know. That's besides the point. So to address the water issue, without us having a project, we cannot do anything. And what that will do, it will destroy the Pearl project across the street, they need 64 taps. And Bob imposed upon me 300. And that 300 is the $2 million. So I have to commit to 300 and pay for the 300 up front, okay? So now there's at the minimum, the 300 units that have to be built. Because I'm committing to another, another commitment that I'm making for 300 water REUs. So I need you to take that into serious consideration because really, if this project is not approved the way it is, it's going to just keep dragging and dragging and dragging. Now, that's number one. Mr. Langer mentioned the issue of litigation because we have 600, to be exact, 603 sewer taps. We used to have 720. We lost land, we lost the majority of them. They got brought back to our property. It's a long, it's a long story that me and Mr. Fox have been living with. He knows all the details. So, so having said that, these 603 have to be disposed of somehow. We're now talking to the township through a facilitator. Hopefully, they may take some of the sewer REUs from us. And I don't know how close we are, but we spent two days last week and yesterday, all day, with the facilitator and the township attorney and the township insurance attorney. It's a long drawn story. But this will certainly help create, what should I call, a goodwill, a goodwill on the township's part to show that they're making a good effort to have a project. So that's, that's number one. Number two, the issue of parking for seniors, really, you offended me because you saw what the party, my kids threw for a 70-year-old last week, last week, for Father's Day. So this, this project is really unique for Redwood. They, they, their box is, they put them in visible locations and they lease them like crazy. The White Lake Township is fully leased. The Howell Township is fully leased. We are off a freeway and these two are out of the freeway. So that tells you there is success that's going to happen here. For parking, I'm going to commit to Redwood that they can, and thankfully, they did a nice little drive, I mean walkway, along Heartland Road that will put anybody at the clubhouse. And next to the clubhouse, there's probably 200 parking spaces. I'm going to commit, if there is a party of a senior only, of 70-years-old, that they will be able to park at Heartland Glen Parking. They, they don't build on golf courses. So they couldn't answer the question, but I was so eager to answer the question. The next question is a question of the buffer. Okay. Oh, before I forget, this fertilizer issue is kind of important to me personally because I belong to a private golf course in West Bloomfield Township and I've been on the board for a very long time. We, Shenandoah Country Club helped, helped West Bloomfield Township, which are really crazy about the environment, okay? Drafted an ordinance for fertilizer for golf courses. Because homes really don't contribute too much fertilizer. Golf courses, we have 70 acres of wetland. Can you imagine how much fertilizer goes into those wetlands? So there is an ordinance that maybe Troy can explore in West Bloomfield Township that could help this township put some kind of ordinance together. And once you review it, we had, we had a hand in drafting it because our ground superintendent was a graduate of Michigan State University and he knew a lot about agronomy. What other issues is there? Oh, the buffer, the buffer. What buffer are we talking about? I'm really puzzled, surprised, shocked, bewildered. What buffer are we talking about? We are in this north, the far northeast corner, there is only one house next to us, which is, I believe, the John Tomlin's house. And there's four units there that are probably over 100 feet from our property line. And his house is actually probably more than 100 feet from the property.
The house itself, yes, but not the property. And I spend the majority of my time in that back property.
Well, you can spend, look how much room we've left for you. Look how much room we've left you. 80% of the wetland is in our property.
Hey, guys? Yeah, we just can't get into exchange.
I don't want to get into details, but I need to know what other buffer are we talking about, Mr. Fox?
Okay.
Because I'm really, what other buffer are we talking about? This side is all empty agricultural.
No, we're not, excuse me, we're, okay. Mr. Yaldo, do you have any other, we're done conversing back and forth. Okay. Thank you very much for that.
No, just one more thing, one more thing.
Hush, please.
I believe if this project is approved, it will be your footprint, your prototype for any future apartment complex. Because this is basically condominiums. It's not apartments, it's attached condominiums, except their rentals. I visited today two apartment complexes in this town, okay? One of them is Oak Brook Apartments. And the other one is Heartland Meadows to the east of us. This project puts them both to shame. That's all I can tell you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else not speak yet?
If you have, you can.
All right. We're closing call to the public. Troy, Planner's Report.
I do have some stuff in Planner's Report. However, you had asked me to address some stuff specifically...
Hey, guys, hey, could you guys go out in the hallway? Yeah, thanks.
Under Planner's Report.
My apologies.
You're fine. You are fine.
I believe that's been touched on. Do you feel there was anything else that I needed to touch on?
It was just how did this change was, so I think you maybe touched on that.
I think it was how to stay connected of future changes.
Okay.
Or anything that may come up for discussion, I think, was the question on how the public can stay notified.
So if you visit our website at heartlandtp.com, this is what will come up. There's a, it may be a different picture, but this is essentially the page. If you click on this agendas and minutes, then you'll see every township board meeting, every plant, these are the dates. And then from that, you can click on, if you just want to see just the agenda, you can click on that. If you want the entire packet, you can click on that. And you can see right now, we've, we don't have anything downloaded, but you can already kind of see the 7, 6 township board meeting listed there. And then as these meetings, as we get closer to these meetings, they will, they'll come up on, somehow, somewhere, this is beyond my technology, but somehow they come up on there and then you can click on that.
Was there something in the previous date that said we're going to be talking about apartments on Heartland Glen?
Well, there was the conceptual review for this project.
The future land use amendment to...
The, well, this actual project, this actual project, this is their third meeting at the, public meeting at the township. Those other two were on this agenda, yes.
So there was a conceptual review, there's not a public notice part of that. That's where the applicant submits a concept to get feedback. No formal decision. That's not, we don't notice those meetings.
Are those posted, the conceptual reviews, are those posted?
They're on the agenda, just as he showed. They showed up on the agenda.
Yep.
At the planning commission and the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Did that help answer that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Good deal. Did you have anything else, Troy?
I do.
Great.
I'm going to segue, trying to smoothly segue away from the Redwood. Now, I'm going to be on a completely unrelated topic to that. Just to let you know, the Kroger Grocery Store in Heartland is, they submitted a land use permit to remodel the interior of that project. I normally don't bring land use permits that are approved administratively to you, but I thought that one was of particular note to let you know that they will be doing some remodeling on the inside of the Kroger Grocery Store.
I think we can all agree on that.
Okay. Anything else, Troy?
No.
All right. Committee report, comments, anyone? All right. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support.
Mitchell and LaRose, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close enough motion carries. Thank you.